Chair Powell, you can go ahead and start. We're live.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I called it order this special meeting of the Board of Regents. Thanks to all of you who are joining us via the livestream video this morning. We have three items of business before the board. And after we conclude this special meeting agenda, we'll take a short break and then reconvene for the board retreat. And we do have, as you all know, a very, a good day and a full day ahead of us. So let's get, let's get going. So to kick off our meeting this morning, we will have our four newest Regents take their oath of office. Judge Tracy Smith is with us. Some of you might recognize Judge Smith as she was on staff with the university's general counsel until she was appointed to the bench in 2016 by then Governor Mark Dayton. And she's a graduate of the University of Minnesota Law School. So thank you so much for being with us, Judge Smith. It's very, very good to meet you and to have you with us. Judge Smith will administer the oath to each Regent individually, beginning with Regent James Farnsworth.
Thank you so much, Chair Powell, and thank you very much for inviting me. The university means so much to me. And I believe so deeply in its mission that it's really a privilege to swear in these new leaders of the institution. And I'm grateful to them and to all of you for the generous service that you provide in stewarding this great public university. So Regent Farnsworth is first up. If I can see, oh, there we go. Regent Farnsworth, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James T. Farnsworth.
I, James T. Farnsworth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Well, congratulations, James. Now, Regent Douglas Hips.
Regent Hips. Repeat after me, please. I, Douglas A. Hips.
I, Douglas A. Hips.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, Doug. So let's move on to Regent Johnson.
Regent Johnson. I, Ruth E. Johnson. Your mute is on still, Regent Johnson. There we go.
I, Ruth E. Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, Regent Johnson. So, and now Regent Verhalen.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning. There we go. I, Cody J. Verhalen.
I, Cody J. Verhalen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
Of Regent of the University of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Congratulations to you, Cody. And Judge Smith, once again, thank you so very much for delivering the oath of office this morning. We really appreciate it. And a big congratulations to these four new members of the Board of Regents. And, you know, we so look forward to congratulating all of you in person sometime soon. So, so now we'll move on with the next item on our agenda, which is an update on the implementation of the M-Safe initiative. Safety and security of the university community is very much top of mind for this board and for university leadership. It's a priority. And today, President Gable will provide us with an update on this very important campus safety initiative. So without any further ado, I'll just turn it over to President Gable, who will lead us through this topic.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Vice Chair Swigum, members of the board. Good morning. And congratulations to our newest members. Recent months and events have inspired us to reflect a lot about what it means to feel safe, to be safe, to feel respected and included across our university family, in our community and beyond. There's no question of our shared goal of a safe campus environment with a lot of nuance and multifaceted defining of the word "safe." So last fall, we initiated an external review with a subject matter expert of how we police with an emphasis on how we improve in community engagement. To assist in that work, the university retained C.L. Alexander Consulting, just led by Dr. Cedric Alexander, who is a law enforcement expert with 40 years of experience in public safety, to help facilitate the conversations with our community and to help us determine where we're strong, but also where we fall short and where we can improve with recommendations that can help bridge a divide that may exist between UMPD and the rest of campus. Beginning in September 2020, Dr. Alexander and his team facilitated conversations with more than 200 individuals, including students, faculty, staff, parents, alumni, members of the University of Minnesota Public Safety Team. More than 30 organizations were represented. In addition, he received online and written submissions. He reviewed traditional and social media, and he examined UMPD practices and training, relying on both his policing experience and his own education and PhD in psychology. As Dr. Alexander highlighted at the February meeting when he presented to the board, his report cites an undeniable tension between those who feel more policing is the solution and those who feel more policing is the problem. His report also offers dozens of proposed recommendations across eight broad categories, which he calls pillars. Some of those recommendations we implemented immediately, including the steps necessary to equip UMPD with body cameras, continuing regular meetings with the mayors of Minneapolis and St. Paul to keep communication lines open and to coordinate as needed on public safety issues. We've already started those meetings. To purchase and distribute the Rave Guardian Campus Safety App to all students, faculty, and staff. And then to transition the Department of Public Safety and UMPD oversight directly to the Senior Vice President for Finance and Operations, Myron Franz, and to be included in his portfolio. Members of the board, in addition to our continued engagement with mayors Carter and Frye, I'm also working very closely with Senior Vice President Franz and our Police Chief Matt Clark to operationalize these initial recommendations and begin the work on the remaining recommendations. We've heard clearly from our community about the pace with which this change is happening. There is an eagerness to pick up that pace, which we fully understand. But we're also committed to doing this right, both in the accuracy and success of what we implement, the sustainability of what we implement, and the shared voice and shared governance in making the decisions about what we do, what we change, what we enhance, or what we might not do going into the future. To that end, last week I met with the FCC, the University Senate, and Student Governance Leadership to share that we are accelerating aspects of implementing Dr. Alexander's recommendation beyond the initial few that we started, including next steps to conduct a policy review and process around mutual aid and multi-agency responses. We're also working actively to hire a social worker as part of the UMPD staff. And the Chief and Senior Vice President Franz carried on those conversations with the M-Safe Implementation Team with multiple meetings about how this process might work. As we take these and other expedited steps, we look forward to engaging through established shared governance structures, including the M-Safe Implementation Team, and then ultimately the newly formed Senate Campus Safety Committee to provide and necessary consultation to make these important decisions together. There are also many other recommendations in Dr. Alexander's report. These require further examination and thought discussion before they are implemented, including the composition of the M-Safe Committee, which is being led by our two co-chairs, Dr. Kathy Quick, Associate Professor in the Humphrey School, and Dr. Mylene Colbreath, Director of Diversity and Inclusion for the Graduate School Diversity Office. They are looking at the significant number of applications to participate in the M-Safe Implementation Team that come from faculty, students, and staff, and working with our office to fill out and flesh out this committee, both in its composition and in its charge. That allows us to do this work through shared governance and ultimately to receive their recommendations from them to me, from me to you, so that we can all work together to ensure that our campus is safe in every sense of that word. Ultimately, the M-Safe Implementation Team will engage in additional consultation around the report and provide an action plan. That's the intended outcome to Senior Vice President Franz, Chief Clark, the newly formed Campus Safety Committee, and me. As I noted in my remarks to you when we presented on this issue in February, the report explicitly focuses on identifying areas for improvement, but it also very explicitly recognizes considerable strengths right now, today, with UMPD and its chief. The department has taken significant steps under Chief Clark's leadership to broaden officer skill sets in de-escalation, mental health, cultural sensitivity, and in community engagement and relationships. Since 2018, for example, UMPD has reported over 500 community events and contacts with 50 different diverse student organizations, along with multiple individual meetings. They have implemented the nationally recognized and forward-looking approaches from the Task Force on 24th Century Policing and Campaign Zero's H Camp Late Program, which instills policies and practices aimed at improving trust and legitimacy. All of this training, engagement, and work reflects our values as an institution and was undertaken at the leadership and under the auspices of UMPD Chief Matt Clark. He and we are also committed nonetheless, and despite this good work to improvement, improvement does not reflect a failure. Improvement reflects improvement, and we are always trying to improve and be better. And we, as a leadership team and an administrative team, are committed to this work. UMPD has a unique mission as a campus police department, but it also sits within the university's Twin Cities metro. It's a jurisdiction unlike any other, with challenges and opportunities unlike any other. And we're committed to the next steps that make it its best possible force on behalf of our university community and reflecting the values of that community. So as we take next steps, we do so with deep respect for shared voice of our community, but also with full and full endorsement of our support for the good work of Chief Clark and his team and the work we all need to do together to advance our shared aspiration to be a more equitable and just campus community that is safe in every sense of that word. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to turn it back to the board for questions and discussions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, President Gable. And while we are waiting for questions to pop up, let me just make a few comments and a question. First of all, I want to thank you for accelerating the work, some of the additional work in mental health and hiring a social worker. I think these are, I think these are good things. I also want to add to your thanks, President Gable, to Chief Clark, to his leadership, to the good work that he does with his, you know, with his team. I think we're very appreciative of the chief's leadership. And I want to hope that he, you know, hears that here this morning. I'm sure he will. My question, President Gable, has to do with the work of the committee. You've said that there's a lot of interest. We're still adding members. Can you give us a sense for the size of the committee and maybe in broad terms? You know, this is a big topic, how they're going to go about their work.
There's no edict on the size of the committee. We want it to be large enough to be representative of the community that it is speaking on behalf of and serving, but small enough to be able to be agile in its decision-making. This is a typical challenge that we have with a variety of shared governance committees. So we are largely relying on the nomination process and looking at balance across those nominees. And that will essentially drive the size of the committee. The committee is charged with looking at the recommendations in Dr. Alexander's reports. They are not charged with taking them writ large and automatically implementing all of them. Instead, they're being asked to look at those recommendations in the context of the Impact 2025 Strategic Plan, which specifically addresses safety. They are asked to rely upon their own subject matter expertise, Dr. Quick being an expert in policing, and Dr. Colbreath being an expert in equity and inclusion, along with the voice of the committee members, who are then asked to represent a variety of constituencies across the campus community to see which of the recommendations make the most sense for us, or if they should be modified or tailored to reflect our values and the details where we actually look to implementation, for what best serves our community. We have asked them to accelerate certain aspects of the work to lift them up as a priority, given recent events, most notably the development of policy around mutual aid, because that became a source of distress for our campus community in the last few weeks to ensure that upon hiring the social worker, that this fits within the overall work that UMPD is already doing and can always do more of around mental health, which is a significant source of the calls that they receive, along with other training, and to ensure that our officers are trained in the best possible way to serve the unique needs of our campus community. And that we think very overtly about how the Senate Campus Safety Committee, which is the sustained and ongoing committee, can be a partner in oversight and provide advisory support in terms of that oversight. And then the last thing that they're working on in this elevated and prioritized way is the very complicated issue of demilitarization. I'll note for the board that the word "demilitarization" means very different things to different people, much like at the beginning of our conversations as a country around policing, the word "defund" meant different things to different people. You've received advice in the form of a letter from Dr. Alexander that demilitarization is not disarmament. It is instead a reflection of policy and transparency around what the inventory includes and when it would or would not be used. The University Senate recently passed a resolution that reflects a desire for the campus community to also engage in this form of demilitarization. And now the M-Safe Implementation Team would look at how those two resolutions align, along with the infusion of their own expertise, before providing advice to us.
All right. Thank you, President Gable. I see that Regent Mayron has her hand up. Regent Mayron.
Thank you. Thank you, President Gable, for your report. I have a couple questions and probably comments that are interspersed within those questions. It's still not clear to me about the connection between the M-Safe Committee and the Senate Safety Committee, how they relate to each other and will ultimately relate to whatever recommendations get examined, implemented, or rejected, or modified. So getting a better understanding about those two different groups would be helpful to me. Second, in terms of timeline, I really appreciate the fact that a number of these items are already being expedited, either for implementation or for examination, particularly in light of all of the events that have occurred over the last year and certainly within the last several weeks. In terms of when we can expect a report back from the respective committees and ultimately from you, what is a realistic timeline? And with that, we'll go, whatever you tell me, can it go faster? Because I think we are hearing, some people would say, we have all the information we need. We don't need anymore. Let's start taking action. I appreciate that that's not where we are, and we need to be very thoughtful in this very complex area that touches not just our community, but also the United States at large. We are part of a much larger issue. But I would like to get a sense of the timeline and how quickly the recommendations can come forward to us so that action can be taken and people know where we stand on these various issues.
Thank you, Regent Mayron. Yeah, President Gable.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Regent Mayron. So I'll start with the latter point, which is, we have taken action. We would love to go back. We've already implemented multiple steps in widespread and sweeping external review, which is in and of itself action. The action, we absolutely recognize the hunger for, but the parts that can go very quickly have gone very quickly. We are amplifying others. The rest may take some time, and we're being transparent about that. This isn't in order to avoid the action. It's in order to do the action right, so that it is sustainable, so that it has meaning and actually has the likelihood of success in terms of creating a safe campus environment in all of the different ways that we would define safety. Part of that is through the M-Safe Implementation Team. The M-Safe Implementation Team is not connected in the overt sense to the Campus Safety Committee. The M-Safe Implementation Team was recommended by Dr. Alexander in order to have appropriate campus reflection and review and advice to me, to Senior Vice President Fran, to the chief, and then ultimately to you, as the board, on which parts of his recommendations are appropriate to act upon, in what order? Should they be modified as circumstances change? They are expected to work themselves out of a job relatively quickly. There's not going to be one single report. We would probably summarize their work at the end. But for example, today is part of the report back to you on their work and the consultation that we've been doing with the co-chairs. The update on where we are with the mutual aid policy being accelerated is a report back from the work that we're doing in partnership with the co-chairs and M-Safe. We will be making regular reports on their work. There will likely be one summary report at the end, but we're not waiting until the end of their work to start. We'll do some of the recommendations as they clear the committee and as we take their advice. The Campus Safety Committee is a Senate construct that they created for themselves. The University Senate is a separate shared governance entity. They are advisory to the president's office and therefore from the president's office up to the board, but they reflect the formal, ongoing shared governance of the institution. So we expect that some of the recommendations that Dr. Alexander made, upon review by M-Safe, would then be handed off to the Campus Safety Committee for ongoing shared governance work. They become the sustainable, formal shared governance repository for the areas of campus safety that deserve shared governance. But they are not connected to each other, per se. M-Safe is a committee that I have stood up to advise me, the Senior Vice President, the chief, and ultimately you. The Campus Safety Committee is a Senate committee that exists by and for the Senate.
Regent Mayron, does that, thank you, President Gable. Regent Mayron, does that get at it?
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Steves, I don't see any other hands raised, so unless you do, I'm going to thank the president for this update and move on to the next topic.
I see Regent Davenport had a hand up briefly.
Oh, right. Regent Davenport, would you, do you have a comment or a question?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Chair Powell. And that is, I wish to emphasize the consultation process and endorse that and remind ourselves that with shared governance, with consultation, it does necessitate, it's necessary to have time committed to that, although this is an urgent issue. We do need to respect the time that it takes to do that consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Davenport. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, President Gable, for that update. Let's turn now to our third and final item. Before us today for review and action is the employment agreement for the Gopher men's basketball head coach position. Before I seek a motion to approve the agreement, I'd like to invite President Gable and Athletic Director Coyle to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll defer to Athletic Director Coyle.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, President Gable, and good morning, Chair Powell and members of the Board of Regents. First off, I would like to recognize President Gable and board leadership for their support. Anytime you hire a coach and intercollegiate athletics, it attracts lots of attention, and especially when it's one of your revenue-generating sports. So I'm thankful for your support, sir, and board leadership and President Gable. A second, I would like to publicly recognize the search committee. As you know, when we started this process, we wanted to put together a very diverse search committee. And I want to thank Dr. Holmans, who is our faculty athletic representative who served on that search committee, Jerick Maya Carter, who is our Director of Compliance, Julie Manning is our Deputy Athletics Director, Dusty Clements is our Deputy Athletics Director. We also work with Peyton Olens, who's our Senior Associate Athletics Director, Tim McCleary, who is our CFO, Tricia Buttke, who is our Chief of Staff and Head of HR, and finally Quincy Lewis, who's one of our Gopher greats and heads up our M Club and our Athletic Department. They all played a critical role in helping us to land Ben Johnson as our next basketball coach at the University of Minnesota. I would also like to recognize Doug Peterson, Brent Bendrewd, and Brian Slavitt. They worked with me on the contract from the beginning to the end, and I'm very grateful for their support and guidance and counsel to work our way through this. As you know, we hired Ben Johnson. We offered him the job, pending your approval of the contract. Ben is a 2005 graduate of the University of Minnesota. He returned back to Minnesota after spending the past three years as an assistant coach at Xavier University. During his time at Xavier University, they had consecutive top 30 recruiting classes. So they were recognized for their national recruiting and success of that recruiting that Ben spearheaded. When I talked to the head basketball coach Travis Steele at Xavier, he talked about the positions he put Ben in to become a head coach and the experience he gained offensively, defensively, and how to manage a program. In addition, Ben has spent time working under Ben Jacobson, who's the head coach at Northern Iowa and regarded as one of the top coaches in the country. He also spent time with Tim Miles at Nebraska, and he started his career as an assistant coach, a graduate assistant at the University of Dayton. And as you all know, Ben was an assistant coach here at Minnesota for several years, and he was instrumental in recruiting Amir Coffey, Daniel Orturo, and Jordan Murphy, three of our most recognizable men's basketball student athletes in the past several years. So we are very excited to welcome Ben back to Minnesota. He has hit the ground running, and there's no doubt he's going to do wonderful things here back in Minnesota. And of course, you all know that Ben grew up in South Minneapolis, and Minneapolis is home to him. With respect to his contract, we have offered Ben a five-year contract. The pay would be 1.95 million, which would put him 13 out of 14 in Big Ten in pay this upcoming year. In addition, we have buyout language in the agreement. If a change was made, that buyout matches what we have with other employment agreements with our coaches here at the University of Minnesota. And of course, we have mitigation language in that agreement as well, that provides security and protections to the institution. So again, excited to welcome Ben here, confident he'll do wonderful things for our program, and I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Powell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for that overview. And let me just have a look here on my little screen, and we'll see who has their hand up. And
Mr. Chair, you may want to get a motion and second on the table.
Oh, always, always appreciated. Yes, before we go to the discussion, is there a motion to approve the employment agreement?
Move to approve.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been, it has been moved and seconded. We will turn to the discussion. And as you know, use Ray's hand if you wish to speak.
Mr. Chair, Regent Swigum has his hand up.
Regent Swigum.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. As I begin, I think we should, first of all, recognize Athletic Director Coyle. In this particular situation, I think that he is, should be recognized for how he strategically should be recognized for how he strategic strategically, how he skillfully and, and I think very thoughtfully negotiated the transition from Coach Patino to Coach Johnson. Athletic Director Coyle, a really, really good job, sir, that you did. Besides the, in the contract itself, I guess not besides the contract, there's just two smaller provisions, members, that I'd like to mention that not, not the dollar amount of the salary and not all the buyouts, but, but two things I say that are very, very important to me and I hope to the university. One is the performance incentives. I, I realize that it's a small part of the contract from a dollar amount. To, to most of us, it'd probably be big money, but when you got him 1.95 million dollar contract, it's, it's a smaller amount, but I, I, I'm really into performance and I think all of us, some degree should have performance in our, in our salaries and in our contracts that, that we perform in life and and Coach, I think that our, our Athletic Director Coyle, I think it's really important that we have those performance incentives in there for, for winning, for winning the Big Ten, for NCAA appearances, and especially for students' classroom grades, for, for the grades in the classroom. I think that is very, very vital. And then, secondly, a smaller provision, but I think also an important one and shows the, uh, the cooperation that took place in this contract negotiation. And that's the mitigation provision. If for some reason, if for some, and who knows what the reason might be, three, four, five, six years down the line, Coach Johnson would choose to leave the university and who knows what reason might be, that might be. I, I believe that the buyout is really skillfully negotiated where there would be no buyout if Coach Johnson were to find another job of coaching within the NCAA's or, or even as assistant coach, even as an assistant coach within the NCAA programs. And, and knowing the youth of Ben Johnson, knowing how qualified and what a good person he is, I can't help but imagine that that would take place. So there would be the no buyout provision and the mitigation provision that's in the contract. Athletic Director Coyle, I, I compliment you in this contract on those two smaller provisions, which to me are very, very important. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Region, uh, Region Swigum. I see Region Farnsworth has his hand up. Region Farnsworth.
Thank you, Chair Powell. I have one quick question and then perhaps a few brief comments. And I was wondering if I could direct, most likely direct this question to Director Coyle. Within the contract, talking, or if you could address this a little bit or elaborate a little bit more on the, the raise provisions or the, you know, base salary increases provision and how that has switched to oversight over the, at the discretion of the Athletic Director and then perhaps get some advice on how that may intersect with board policy in the future, you know, depending on, of course, what the number would be and whatnot, but just talking a little bit more about what seems to be a switch to providing those kind of raise oversight to the Athletic Director.
Okay, thank you, Region Farnsworth. Athletic Director Coyle, a question on raise provisions. Would you like to take that one?
Of course. Thank you, Chair Powell and Region Farnsworth. Good morning and congratulations on being sworn in this morning. Obviously, the past thirteen months has dramatically shifted college athletics at Minnesota and across the country. And we do have other employment agreements with head coaches that have similar language that salary adjustments are left to the discretion of the Athletics Director. And the reason why we added this to this agreement was because our finances, we are not sure with the long-term impact will continue to be of COVID-19. And so our goal was to protect the institution as much as possible. So instead of having guaranteed salary increases in there with not knowing what our revenue will look like this upcoming year, our future years, again, given the pandemic, it felt like it gave us more flexibility to protect us with unknown potential revenue damage in the future because of the ongoing pandemic.
Okay, thank you, Director Coyle. Does that get at it, Region Farnsworth?
It does. Thank you, Chair Powell. And if I could just make one brief comment. As many colleagues know, of course, but members of the public may not necessarily know, you know, as a board and as Regents, and we are members of the Association of Governing Boards of Universities and Colleges, which is a fantastic prof- fantastic professional development organization, and there is a document that I found that talks about governing board responsibilities for intercollegiate athletics, and I just wanted to read two sentences from it, just so folks kind of know who I am as a, as an individual Regent, um, look at my role with intercollegiate athletics. It says, "Intercollegiate athletics programs are in various ways cost centers, revenue centers, and risk centers for colleges and universities. And while they are not of themselves mission centers, they influence the educational mission in meaningful ways. Effective fiduciary governing bodies must become broadly informed about these programs and must accept ultimate accountability for them." So I, I quote from that, I read that to express my philosophy around and the importance of decisions like these. And I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion this morning and then take this, take this responsibility as a Regent very seriously. I've, you know, reviewed the contract, especially around where we're at with total base salary, the buyout structure while having attractive mitigation provisions. To me, I have also, you know, balanced that around future discussions that we'll be having as a board around a potential loan for intercollegiate athletics and what the structuring of this contract perhaps looks like against that and the broader climate of, of where intercollegiate athletics is at. So that wraps up my comments and appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Region Farnsworth. Region Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and actually Region Farnsworth, I think, you know, covered one of the areas in particular that, that I had a question about. So with respect to this, you know, I, I, the language in the, the contract itself and, and, you know, we're approaching fifty percent of our board as attorneys here, so I think there may be extra attention to these types of details, but I, as I understand that, that the, the purpose of the not, the, the, the lack of specifics on, on the future increases in compensation and salary under this contract, one of my questions relates to the, the top end. I mean, so while this does provide obviously discretion for keeping, keeping things static based on performance, based on financial realities and so on, it doesn't have any sort of a cap and, and it would potentially obviate our own policy that, that talks about what must come before the board. So what, I, I guess my question, I know if it's Director Coyle or if it goes to Mr. Peterson, what, what would be the, the maximum amount that a raise could be provided short of an amendment to the contract that would require it to come back to the board?
Thank you. Thank you, Region Rocha and Mark or Doug, I'll leave it. You guys decide who you want to take, who you want to take that question on, on the cap.
Chair Powell, if I may, let me make one comment and then I'll turn
Sure.
to General Counsel Peterson. Good morning, Region Rocha. Thank you for the question. First off, hopefully President Gable will nod when I make this comment. Anytime we're talking about salary adjustments for coaches, et cetera, I work closely with her in board leadership and we would continue that practice of working closely with her on any discussions with respect to compensation for our head coaches. So please know that, Region Rocha, as a backdrop, and with that, I'll turn over to General Counsel Peterson.
Okay, thank you, AD Coyle. Mr. Peterson.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chair Powell. Region Rocha, I don't approach this question so much focused on, you know, a particular dollar amount. It's probably more an issue of the form at which any particular raise would arise in a particular circumstance. And as I, you know, think about your question, I have probably a four-part reaction to it, which may be helpful to how this plays out in practice. And the first one is that unlike your assessment of contract provisions that relate to an employee such as the coach, where once the contract is signed, that employee at that moment in time has a, a right. Here, we're talking about sort of the discretion acknowledged in the contract that will be extended to your appointed authority, that is your Athletics Director. And I just note that that's authority that you can sort of give us and take us away over time. And so it's a a form of discretion that you have ongoing control over, which is different than your approval of the rights that you're extending to your employee Coach Johnson by approving this particular contract. And that gives life to the second point, which is Athletic Director's Coil, Coil point that, you know, in practice, the way in which this provision has been employed, because it appears in other contracts as well, is more in the context of things like merit pay increases that have been authorized by the board as part of its budget process for all employees. And then there's always an issue of whether or not how that converts over for, you know, these high-paid head coaches who are under, you know, particular contracts as opposed to kind of the general sort of employee base of the university. So there may be an opportunity for a merit pay increase of one or two percent. And this provision is more, as I see it, flagging for the employee, that is Coach Johnson, that Athletics Director Coyle is going to have discretion over that. You know, not only whether to extend the raise, but maybe more importantly to withhold the raise and that that's, you know, clear to the employee as part of the process. And that's how, as I understand it, Athletics Director Coyle has employed this particular provision in consultation with the president and board leadership as he's indicated. Next, as to what I think you're alluding to is more sort of the lawyer's question of, well, gosh, could somebody kind of take that, those words and, and run with them, so to speak? And so maybe the, the example I would use is that instead of, you know, the form of the raise being something that's parallel to a merit pay increase that has been blessed by the board for all university employees, instead it's just a standalone raise to Coach Johnson of $200,000. The third point I have for you is that the way that would occur, and this would be both from the point of view of Coach Johnson's lawyer and agent as well as from that of OGC, is that we would want to memorialize that in a contract amendment. And in our contract amendments, what we would do is bring in or carry forward all of the other provisions of the contract, all of its bonus provisions and buyout provisions. So I can't imagine a situation where as part of that contract amendment, we wouldn't then cross the $1 million threshold with the amendment. And as a result, it would require board approval and board vote. Fourth point, you know, theoretically, is it possible that Mark Coyle would try to do some kind of side deal by a, a little letter that says, oh, by the way, I'll give you an extra 200 grand? And somehow, you know, skirt the process. Well, in my view, that too would require communication to the board and to the extent there's a question of whether or not that's a simply a $200,000 decision? Or is it a decision that is revising what has been previously approved by the board and thus needs to return to the board for consideration? To be clear, my legal advice in that situation, because it's not sort of explicitly spelled out in board policy as to what is required in that circumstance. My clear legal advice would be that it is necessary for administration to speak to board leadership about that. And my recommendation would be it should return to the board. The form at which it returns to the board could vary. I mean, I could see where the decision would be, which makes a lot of sense to me, that it be a another full kind of vote of the board. I could also see in certain circumstances, board leadership saying, well, maybe the approach would be to make it an information item at the next board agenda and have us submit a privilege memo to you in advance that would flag that that's coming to you and indicate that as part of the information item, if any one Regent would wish to have it be taken up by a vote of the board, that any one Regent could exercise that so that there would always be an opportunity, if you will, for the full board to consider the matter to the extent that we would believe that policy is sort of ambiguous or vague in that territory. So hopefully that four-part response provides you and the other members of the board a sense of the lay of the land here, because I, I appreciate that with these big-dollar contracts to coaches, there's sort of important sort of public policy questions here as to the extent of the oversight by public officials and that use of, of public money. So, thank you.
Thank you, General Counsel Peterson. Region Rocha, does that get at that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Yeah, it, it does, and I appreciate the response, Mr. Peterson. As, you know, I, particularly your last point about our, our responsibility as the governing board and as a policy board. In that we do have, you know, specific dollar amounts in policy for, you know, be based on discussions and, and policy decisions by this board historically. And so that, that is why I, I raised the issue. And if, if you're, if you're telling me that the administrative assurance is that anything that would exceed what would be our institution-wide merit pay would, would be communicated back to the board, I, I believe I can live with that. I, I do think that all that you had just described could have been either placed in, in a, in a resolution or even within the contract, but if this is your assurance that, that it will come before this board, so as to be consistent and true to the intent and spirit of our current policy, I, I can live with that. The last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, members of the board, is that I'm, I'm, I'm excited when, when the announcement was made for Ben Johnson to coach the team. I'm, as a, as a you know, Gopher a few times over, I was excited that we had someone who is a Minnesota native who is also a former Gopher coming in to lead the program. Not that that's a requirement, but certainly something that I think is meaningful to a lot of folks. And hopefully means this is the place where he wants to establish his legacy and, and he's, you know, and it's, and it's a a long-term relationship. And, and so from that standpoint, I have, I, I'm enthusiastic. I do think that we as a board, as we go forward here, as we've seen the, with the events of the last year, the discussions of the last year, I think it is an opportunity for us to have a discussion, especially with a board that has changed over quite a bit over the last couple of cycles, to have a discussion about what our intercollegiate athletics program is intended to do, how it interplays with the rest of the institution. There are obviously huge financial considerations for the Athletics Department right now that I do believe will, will be impacting our core mission. And so Mr. Chair and members of the board, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll have that conversation as soon as, as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Region Rocha, for the thoughtful governance questions and for your final comment. We'll turn now to Region Kenyania.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director Coyle, President Gable and everyone. I want to offer my welcome to Mr. Johnson. Welcome back, I should perhaps say, to the university and to the city. Think, you know, I echo the other comments that we're all excited to, to have him here. With that being said, I, I hope we can separate that comment from my next one, which, you know, are completely separate. I, I have had, I had the chance to briefly, or actually not briefly, speak with the president as well with the chair, so I, I don't have lengthy remarks. Just to, just to reflect and say that, I mean, I, I think as a board member, I, I would love to see more board engagement and involvement with such decisions. I think, you know, that we don't decide how the public interacts with and how much attention and energy they pour into athletic. But I feel that we do have to respond in kind, right? We know when, when something doesn't go well with athletics, it's gonna be on the front page of the paper and it's gonna capture our attention. So I think because of that, we have to be more engaged and just more in tune. So it's just surprised me with such decisions, the, the board's lack of input consultation or, you know, really any involvement in the decision-making process. I understand that that's just Input consultation or, you know, really any involvement in the decision making process. I understand that that's just. How it's been. Personally, to me, I'm not sure that that's how it should continue to be. And I think Regent Farnsworth, you know, with his comments, kind of got at that a bit. I think it's just, you know, when when the. From the very beginning, the the whole process begins, the decision is made. It's it's announced. I mean, we are informed. Pretty much the same time that the public is or just just before. And then it's put out to the world as official for a whole month, then we get a vote. I'm not really sure what. What this vote is and what it's doing. Because it, you know, it seemed kind of bound and I'm not even saying bound to a bad decision, right? I'm happy to. Support this resolution and really do welcome Coach Johnson. But, you know, and again, I. I feel like those comments are really more for. My fellow board members than the president. You know, I think the the administration will respond as we ask them to, as they always have done. So it's a matter of this board deciding. How we want to interact with such things. And and I'm not asking that this board serve as a search committee. You know, or anything like that. I think that's far too much involvement. But I I do think more is needed. I will reiterate what I began with. Welcome to Coach Johnson. We're we're happy to have him back at this university. And and we're excited to to see what he does with the program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Regent Kenyanya, for for that comment. I see one other hand raised here right now, and that is Regent Mayron. And and by the way. I'm remiss, Regent Mayron, before we turn it over to you, I do want to point out. To all my colleagues and fellow board members that today is your birthday and we and what a what a great way to spend it. And and so we wish you a very, very, very happy birthday, Jamie. And I'll turn it over to you now. Turn it over to you now for your for your your question or comment.
Well, I have to say, I've never had someone plan a retreat and a special board meeting in order to honor my birthday. So this is this is a first. So thanks much, everybody. Thank you. I I just want to respond to Regent Kenyanya's remark, last remark about process. I think that he's raising an issue. That perhaps we we should look at through the governance committee on a going forward basis, which is. Right now, we have provisions that. Require certain matters come to the board. If they reach, for example, a particular monetary level. Commitments in this case of $1 million or potential of $1 million or more. And for final approval. And often, many of the things that we have brought to us are brought to us on basically almost. In the form of a consent agenda where contracts have been entered into and and then they come to the board for final approval. And we're not involved. And I think we'd all agree, we shouldn't be involved in the negotiation or agreement on those contracts. I recognize athletics may create a different situation for the reasons that James pointed out. That was he was reading from from AGB. And so maybe we need to look at, again, this process that we have in place that requires. Certain items simply based on their monetary value to come back to the board for approval. And are we satisfied that that that's enough? Or do we think we need to be able to weigh in? Even before they come to us for final approval until they're, you know, right now, they come to us in some senses baked already and. We're being asked to say yay or nay to it. And that might ultimately be still the best way to do it. But I do think it's worth revisiting. And I don't think the issue is confined to athletics. I think athletics shines a light on this particular policy. And I think it's worth looking at as to whether that's still a good policy or not. I, for one, really have no desire. To weigh in on athletics at all. I don't think I could possibly add any value. As a regent to the process that the athletic director in the president's office goes through in order to select and make a recommendation on compensation or who to hire. I I can't imagine I could add any value on that. So. I I, for one, personally, wouldn't want to be involved in that. Others may disagree, but I think it's worth looking at and would suggest that it go on the plate for governance to take a look at that policy again.
All right. Thank you, Regent Mayron. We appreciate that that comment. And I'm sure that Secretary, Mr. Steves is, you know, you know, kind of flagged that point, whether we ought to take a closer look really at our process, particularly for these high governance process for these high value contracts. And we'll follow up and appreciate that comment. I see Regent McMillan would like to comment.
Thank you, Chair Powell, and. I want to echo some of what. Vice Chair Swigum had to say about. Athletic Director Coyle's work here. Welcome, our new coach. And make a comment on. On governance process and oversight because it's always. A matter of. Of perspective and and time. And. In the unusual position I find myself in, having gotten here in 11, 2011. There was, we what this contract might have been. Covered with the dollar. Value. Requirement that we look at it. But back at that point. There was no oversight role for the board. And the board created a list of some 30 or maybe it's 40, or somewhere between 40 and 50 positions. Including coaches, head coaches at the, you know, at the Twin Cities. And a few of them at the Duluth campus that have to come to the board. So my point is that governance evolves. To meet the needs of what the board sees and the world around us. And. There's been a lot of evolution in the 10 years I've watched this. And I think most of it's been good evolution. And I think a dialogue about. What additional governance process and oversight might be needed is good, but I think we've got to divorce it from. A moment in time or the, you know, the the heat and the attention that comes with. A big, high profile coaching discussion. And take it offline and into the world of what what do we want to do from a governance perspective and what is. The state of Minnesota and our duties require. So. I just, we do evolve over time and over a decade, we've added an awful lot of governance. Oversight and some of it around the dollar value threshold and a lot more of it around. Key positions that require. They come to the board for approval. So I do think we. We are constantly mindful of our duty. To, you know, Regent Farnsworth's question or comment. I don't feel we've ever shirked that, and I don't think we are here. And I certainly welcome a dialogue, but I wouldn't. Start with the assumption that we have to add more process. I'd ask. You know, what's missing today? And if anything is, and what might we do about it? In the broader context of our governance duty. So again, thank you, Director Coyle, for your good work here. This is an impressive transition. Welcome, Coach Johnson, and. Thanks to all involved.
All right. Thank you for that comment, Regent McMillan. Much appreciated. I I see General Counsel Peterson has his hand raised.
Chair Powell, thank you. I think given the. You know, the conversation that has occurred, I would be remiss if I didn't. Interject something here, which is that I believe some of these comments are underestimating. The authority of the board of regents and the way in which. Your process weighs on the negotiations of a contract like this. And it returns to my comments to Regent Rocha. You know, I'm sure I speak for Athletics Director Coyle and President Gable as well here. I mean, we commit this with a lot of. Humility that we are. Talking about a, you know, a large contract amount involving public dollars. That warrants public review and that means. Public approval by 12 elected. Officials that have been sort of appointed by the legislature, the state of Minnesota. And the fact that the contract will need to be approved by this body. Weighs heavily on on the process of negotiating the contract. What is reasonable and what the prospective employee can expect and also in terms of. You know, how we shape some of the provisions that are kind of discussed, you know, as part of this contract. So. You know, I have full respect for the board wanting to evaluate, you know, what precedes that. And, you know, keeping in mind that in the end, we need to have a efficient negotiation process. So. I have respect for, you know, your wanting to kind of think about and consider that part of the process. But I have to say. The most. Important part of the process and the way in which the regions will have the greatest weight, no matter. How you talk about what precedes it is the fact that ultimately. This contract needs to come before you and be approved by you and that. That looming authority. Very much shapes how contracts get negotiated by the administration. And it kind of infects the process in a lot of very positive ways. That I believe are are good for the public and show that the University of Minnesota takes this. In a very serious and responsible fashion.
All right. Thank you for that comment, General Counsel Peterson. Mr. Steves, I don't see any other hands raised. Do you?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, then. Let's move to the the roll call vote.
On approval of the employment agreement, Regent Davenport.
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth.
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Herr. Regent Herr is absent. Regent Hipsh.
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Johnson.
Yes.
Regent Johnson votes yes. Regent Kenyanya.
Yes.
Regent Kenyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron.
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent McMillan.
Yes.
Regent McMillan votes yes. Regent Rocha.
Yes.
Regent Rocha votes yes. Regent Swigum.
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. Regent Verhalen.
Yes.
Regent Verhalen votes yes. Chair Powell.
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are 11 in favor and one absent.
All right. Now, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steves. Thanks. Thanks to. The board for a very good discussion. This passes 11, 11 to 0 with one absence. And I just want to also extend. My thanks to Athletic Director Coyle. I think this has been a really, really successful. Transition in all ways. Transition in the leadership in the Gopher men's basketball program. It's really been handled well and and. Mark, I I think many Minnesotans are excited about the future of Gopher basketball. So congratulations on this hire and we look forward to what's coming. Thanks a lot. So. That concludes the the business of this this special meeting. I'll remind everybody that we'll take a quick break now. We'll take a about a 10 minute break. We'll reconvene at 10:15, at 9:15. I beg your pardon. And. And then we'll move on to the retreat discussion. Stay connected into this Zoom session. We'll have a 10 minute break. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes at at 9:15. This meeting is adjourned.